Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council, also serving as the Library Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Today is our regular meeting for Thursday, October 17th. And if you would please stand and join Councilman Hobart in our salute to the flag.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dana. Cindy, would you do a roll call please?
Councilmember Hines.
President.
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Portem Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Wile.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Here. Thank you. We're all here today and we're glad that you're all here today. So today, we have a number of presentations that we're going to start the meeting with. And the first one is a brief comment on the upcoming Art Affair. The 13th, or actually the 2013 Rancho Mirage Art Affair will be held once again at the city's park, the Whitewater Park, on Saturday, November 9th and Sunday, November 10th. And the fair will run from 9:30 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, both Saturday and Sunday. And as you know, this is a free event, so we're inviting all the public to attend this public event. We're going to have over 100 juried visual artists, primarily from the southwest, who will display their wares and their various boos. Entertainment this year will spotlight on a dynamic lineup of smooth jazz and R&B musicians. On Saturday, November 9th, R&B vocalist Deborah Allen will get things started at 11:00 in the morning, followed by smooth jazz saxophonist Steve Cole at 1:30. On Sunday, November 10th, the music will begin at 11:00 a.m. with blues guitarist and vocalist David Scheid, followed by local smooth jazz recording artist Will Donato at 1:30. Food and beverages will be provided by Rancho Mirage Rotary Club, and the Beer and Wine Garden will be run by them also, and the money will go to support local charities. Actually, the food and beverage will be supplied by a number of local restaurants. As always, the event is free to the public, and free parking is available near the venue, or as space permits, we'll have closer-in parking, but also we'll have a complimentary shuttle service which will run to and from the river. So we're going to play a brief video right now, or actually it's a TV spot that you'll see airing on TV very soon. Hope you enjoy it and look forward to seeing you at this year's Art Affair. Sarah?
Come celebrate Art Affair presented free to you by the City of Rancho Mirage, November 9th and 10th at Whitewater Park. Admission to this event is free and will feature art, music, wine, and food. The stage is set for the smoothest live jazz around. Enjoy that glass of wine as you explore spectacular art and one-of-a-kind jewelry. The Rancho Mirage Art Affairs for the young and young at heart, November 9th and 10th at Whitewater Park, Rancho Mirage.
Okay, thank you. And again, that's November 9th and 10th, Whitewater Park. Hopefully you'll all have time to come by and enjoy the artwork, but also the music that will be provided. It'll be a great event. Okay, our next presentation today is from Richard Clapp. He's a member of the Board of the Palm Springs Unified School District. It's great to see you here today, bringing us up to date on the state of the school district. And we're really excited because this is the first time we've actually been able to talk about Rancho Mirage and the Rancho Mirage High School.
Well, good afternoon.
So we're glad to have you here.
Very, very pleased to be able to make this brief presentation to you. I want to start out briefly by letting you know what the state of our finances are. I think that's always a good thing to let everybody know where you are on that. When Proposition 30 passed last year, a lot of people believed that meant that our school problems were over and solved. And when this year's budget came in, state budget came in positive with some surpluses, well, the analogy I'd like to, I like analogies, so let me go with this analogy. I would compare our budget woes over the past few years to a flood. Now, not like the flash floods we see around here in thunderstorms, but ones like we hear every year that occur in the upper Midwest. They know the flood is coming from the snow melt, and the cities have time to sandbag the levees, position their equipment, warn the low-lying homeowners. Now that's where we were in 2008. We knew it was coming. We prepared by being conservative and built up our reserves. In retrospect, our school district did a better job than most all school districts in the state of California. Now where we were in November of 2012 is where the flood is when the top of the sandbags have been reached. The low-lying homes have all been flooded, and the resources are all used up. If Proposition 30 had not passed, the sandbags would have been breached, and our school district would have started to disintegrate. Now that didn't happen. But to stick to the analogy, the floodwaters crested and stayed there. Nothing was really fixed, but it wasn't getting any worse. Then the state passed a balanced budget in June 2013 with a surplus. We are receiving more money. The floodwaters are starting to receive. However, you don't hear much from the news when this happens in the Midwest. The media has moved on to the next crisis. But as we know, much has to be cleaned up, fixed, and rebuilt when recovering from disasters. That's where we are today. Our class sizes are too large, employees have now gone five years without a raise, and gas was $2.40 a gallon when all this started. We have 100 vehicles that outweighed along their lifespan, although we burned one up last week. We have one less. We don't have a junior varsity sports program. We need new textbooks or technology to replace them. If Governor Brown's plan works, and the state has surpluses, it's going to take us eight years to get back to where we were in 2008. Eight years. Now how many of you think that we're going to have eight more years of state surpluses? Now, on to Rancho Mirage High School. Open September 3rd with close to 900 students. Now as you know, it has two academies, the Culinary Arts and Performing Arts, and they're off to a roaring start. Now that leads to my next point. I don't blink. I don't think that we're going to have eight more years of surpluses in California, not in a row. Now when the next dip happens, we want to do what we can to protect our academies and other programs. So Rancho Mirage High School no longer has a Performing Arts Center. It is now known as the Helene Galen Center of Performing Arts at Rancho Mirage High School. Ms. Galen donated $1.5 million and has committed to help us raise more. As you know, the grand opening is November 15th at 2:00 p.m., and I hope you will all be there for that wonderful event. In addition to that, Newman's Own has donated $25,000 to our Culinary Arts Program, and also, this is starting and happening in our other academies around our school district, even elementary schools. Sunny Sands Elementary School received $30,000 from the Owen Foundation. Now this is occurring through our school district foundation, the Pinnacle Fund. An executive director, Ellen Goodman, has been hired, and a comprehensive program is being rolled out. My personal thought is that I don't see why we can't be raising $2 or $3 million a year to support this school district through this foundation. We have an outstanding program to sell, and we live, as you know, in the philanthropy capital of the United States. We want to become as independent of Sacramento as we can. Now finally, I would like to thank you. When I came on the Board five years ago, relations between this city and us were not at their best. Through a lot of hard work and good intentions, that has changed. The school district, we are embedded in the fabric of Rancho Mirage, and we want to be community members for a long time. So basically, the state of our school district is well, and we're part of your city, and we're glad that's the way it is, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Well, thanks for being here today. We really are excited about Palm Springs Unified School District and the new high school, and we're looking forward to a couple of years from now when it's a full four-year school, and everything's operating at the most efficient way, so thanks for being here.
Yeah, they had about 150 kids try out for the football team.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a presentation from Palm Springs Unified School District, and if I could have Joyce McMahon and Brian Ingelson come forward.
Good afternoon. It's great to have you here. Nice to see you. Nice to have you here too. Well, I understand that instead of us giving out a plaque, actually, we're going to receive one today. So you want to talk a little bit about it?
Sure. I'm Brian Ingelson. I'm the director of bands at Palm Springs High School, and Joyce McMahon, one of our booster parents, and also Beverly Ingelson, my better half, and also the Visual Corps Director with the band are here. In December of last year, we received an honor from Washington. We had applied to be part of the inaugural parade, and Palm Springs High was selected out of more than 2,800 bands from across the country, and we were the sole representatives for the state of California. We got that word on December 16th. I was actually en route to Chicago to a band director's conference, and when we got off the plane, the voicemail was there, something to the effect, "Mr. Ingelson, I'm calling on behalf of President Obama and Vice President Biden," and it's one of those things you'll never forget. Over the next three and a half weeks, we worked very, very hard with the community, with the band boosters, and the students to prepare in order to do the inauguration. A lot of people don't realize that being accepted to the inaugural, there is no funding. All of the inaugural festivities are privately funded. And we went out to the community, and we have many, many students who come from Rancho Mirage to Palm Springs High School, from Palm Desert, and actually, all regions of the desert, because we're a legacy school. I have students who are now the fourth generation to graduate from Palm Springs High, and I believe we have an alum standing right here. But in reaching out and in doing the community service that we try to do within our program, we had to ask for assistance. And when Joyce told me that Rancho Mirage was going to step up and was going to give us a donation of the size and caliber of what you did, I can't tell you how much it meant, not only to myself, but to the students. And it was part of the reason that we were able to do the inaugural. And for those students, it was a once-in-a-lifetime. They walked in the footsteps of Lincoln, they walked in the footsteps of Kennedy, of Reagan, and it was truly an incredible event. And so today, on behalf of all of the students, the parents, and all those that we represented at the inaugural, I'd like to present this plaque to you and the council, and all the residents of Rancho Mirage for supporting the Palm Springs High School Spirit of the Sands Band and Visual Corps as we represented all of you at the 57th inaugural in Washington.
This is really great. We really appreciate it. Joyce, would you like to say a few words about the trip, or anything involving the band?
Sure, I would love to. My daughter is a senior, and she plays the trumpet, and we were so excited when we were able to have 108 students participate in the marching band in Washington DC, and the event was phenomenal. They were, you probably should explain better, how they got up first thing in the morning in Baltimore, they were transported to the Pentagon where they waited for their opportunity, and then they were in a holding place in the outside of the Capitol Building waiting for their opportunity to start the parade. I, myself, with about, there were about 15 to 20 parents, we were waiting next to President Obama, the viewing opportunity that everyone saw, so it was very exciting, cheering them on. We were so excited about everything they accomplished, how hard they worked, they were walking for miles, and they did an awesome job.
So how many days were you back there?
Five.
Five days.
We left at 2:00 in the morning, but we actually stayed in Baltimore because the cost flying into Washington and also the hotels were over the top. Rooms were going for a minimum $1,400 in Washington, so we stayed in Baltimore and commuted from there, so.
Well, the city of Rancho Mirage is really excited about being able to help you all go back there and really be there on behalf of the whole desert in the state. And, you know, I'm an Indian graduate myself, but we have to say, "Go Rattlers" now.
Yes. Well, we still have Rancho Mirage in series at Palm Springs, and we were in Rancho Mirage.
Yeah, well, that's great. Well, we really appreciate the plaque and give our best to all the kids in the band, and I saw them marching right past the viewing stands, so they looked great. So maybe again, before too long, you'll be back there again.
Yes.
Well, thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Thanks all of you.
Ted Wile, who's going to introduce our next speaker. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, would you join me? Got plenty of time. The purpose of Breast Cancer Awareness Month is to raise awareness and educate individuals about breast cancer. As Allison will say, it's important for women to take charge of their own breast health, not for one month, but throughout the year. I would venture to say that there isn't any one of us whose family or friends have not been affected by some form of breast cancer. Thanks to the coordination of Elizabeth Wallenham, Vice President of Marketing and Public Relations at Eisenhower Medical Center, I'm delighted to welcome back Allison Mayer-Sachs, Community Outreach and Cancer Support Services, and Director at Eisenhower Lucy Kersey Center. Allison will share some of her thoughts and tell you about the programs that are going on this month. And Allison, I want you to know, I dressed in pink just because you are going to be here, and if you would, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks again. Yeah. To come back and share with you a little bit about what we're doing at Eisenhower Lucy Kirchi, Kirchi Cancer Center. It really is a pleasure. October is recognized nationally as Breast Cancer Awareness Month for really one reason, and one reason only. One in eight women is diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. That's a huge statistic, and one we could look at in two different ways. One, we can say, "Wow, look at us. We're getting really good at finding breast cancer, and we know the earlier we find any cancer, the better our outcomes are." The other issue is, why are we seeing so much breast cancer, and what can we do about it? Besides offering exceptional treatment and care at all of our medical institutions here in the valley, Eisenhower certainly included, one of the most important things is education and awareness. It's important to do self-breast exams. It's important to get clinical breast exams, and there is no excuse whatsoever for any woman in this valley, or any man with a family history of breast cancer, to go without a mammogram. That's right, any man. Because while it's a small percentage, most people aren't aware that men also get breast cancer. So I'd like to share with you a little bit about what we're doing for our valley and our community members to raise awareness, education, and information. Something new we've done this year, and we're really very excited, we actually were filled up within two days, was to offer free clinical breast exams. That's a hand-on breast examination for men and women in the valley. We were able to offer this free clinical breast exam in three different locations throughout the valley, Palm Springs, La Quinta, and Rancho Mirage. And to date, we have one screening date left, and to date, we've screened over 40 women, and that's a wonderful, wonderful thing that we were able to do. We're offered a lecture on breast cancer myths and realities, an overall lecture on information people should know and be aware of. Today, actually, I had to look down and remind myself. Today, October 17th at 5:00 p.m., we invite any and all of you to join us for a lecture. The only certified genetic counselor in the desert will be speaking on the Angelina Jolie Effect, Are You at Risk for Hereditary Breast and Ovarian Cancer? The numbers for referral for genetic counseling have skyrocketed since Angelina Jolie came out. It's amazing, the power of People and Us Magazine and our celebrities, and while we can make fun of them, we greatly appreciate their bringing awareness of the possibility of hereditary breast and ovarian cancer. So the genetic counselors speak today, are you at risk? Coming up, starting tomorrow, we're going to have Breast Cancer Prevention: How to Reduce Your Risk. What a timely lecture, considering just a week and a half ago, the newest study was released on the importance of exercise for lowering your risk of breast cancer. Important, not I'm saying preventing, I'm just saying lowering your risk. One of the biggest studies undertaken to date with our tax dollars in this country was just completed, and there seems to be a direct correlation between the amount of exercise women are doing and lowering their risk of breast cancer. We will have on October 22nd a lecture on breast screening recommendations. It's confusing today. Do I get an MRI? Do I get a mammogram? Well, what about a sonogram? That's supposed to be really good for me too, doc. So lots of different questions, and we'd like to make it clear, who gets what, why, and when, and most importantly of all, that people get screened. Two more things up on the horizon coming up for us. One of our medical oncologists, Dr. Iliana Popescu, will do a presentation on October 24th and update us on the newest treatment for early-stage breast cancer. And lastly, at the end of the month, on Tuesday, October 29th, another medical oncologist, Dr. Kelly Flippin, will present on treatment options for metastatic breast cancer. That's an advanced-stage breast cancer that has moved beyond the breast. The average life expectancy today for a woman with metastatic or advanced-stage breast cancer is 10 years. That's an extraordinary accomplishment over the last few years. Lastly, having nothing to do with this, but I can't resist the urge to share with everyone in the room, since I sit on the Board of the American Cancer Society, that recently they announced the 47th winner of the Nobel Prize in Science Research in Cancer, who was underwritten completely by funds from the American Cancer Society. So those of you throughout the valley know that we have five different relays for life. One tomorrow, Palm Desert, we have one right here in Rancho Mirage, we have one in Indio, we have one in La Quinta, and various other places. We really encourage all of you to come out and take a walk around a track with us. A donation of $20 gets you a lovely t-shirt. More importantly, your donations hopefully will help support our receiving the 49th Nobel Prize for Research in Cancer. So thank you very much, and have a lovely afternoon.
Allison, thanks for being here. And when is the next relay for life this weekend?
This Saturday, yes. It starts, it kicks kickoff with a survivor's walk at 9:00 a.m. And if you've never attended before and you have just a certain amount of time, come out at 7:00 o'clock and look at the luminaria ceremony if you'd like to be moved. That's when all the lights go out, and people have donated funds for a candle in memory or in honor of a loved one, or someone they know who's fought the battle with cancer or lost their battle. And lights go out, and they line the track with these candles, and they spell out the word "hope" as people silently walk together. It's really very moving.
Very moving ceremony.
Thank you for asking.
And it said Palm Desert?
Palm Desert High School.
Okay.
We'll see y'all there.
Everybody should be out there.
Good. Thanks again.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Hobart, nice to see you.
Allison, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And we're blessed to have a facility like Eisenhower Medical Center in our city, and we look forward to having many guests from the medical facility here at our meetings. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ted. The next and last final presentation today is regarding the Desert Cities Energy Partnership Silver Award, and I'd like to call Brett Wilson, one of our management analysts, who will be here to receive the award on behalf of the City of Rancho Mirage.
Katie's going to tell you about the program.
Okay. We have Katie Barrows from SEVAG coming forward. Katie, it's nice to see you today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council appreciate the opportunity to be here again with you. We just obviously met a few weeks ago when the city adopted your energy and sustainability plans. We're here this afternoon. I want to introduce Paun Kunicorn from Southern California Edison, and Maya Aubrey, also from Southern California Edison. They're here to make a presentation to the city for your leadership by example in energy savings and energy conservation. I just want to very briefly review the accomplishments of the city. Since 2009, the city's been a partner with SEVAG and all of our other cities in the desert in the Desert Cities Energy Partnership. And you've done a great job, always showing leadership with some state-of-the-art projects like the chiller at the Rancho Mirage Library, which I think is one that was put in several years ago, lighting projects, and these go back even before the point at which we're measuring, 2006, but you have had some good lighting projects at City Hall, at the Public Works Annex. I know Bruce has been involved with LED lighting at the traffic signals for quite a number of years. That was something that the City of Rancho Mirage was a leader in, starting in the valley. You also have done one of our great projects with the support from Edison. City staff have what are called power strips at their desk that regulate and turn off appliances, well appliances, things that are not being used, like lights, extra lights, and radios, and those kinds of things to save energy. Altogether, the city in the last few years since 2006 has cut your energy use here at City Hall by almost 7%, which makes you eligible for the Silver Level Award from Southern California Edison. That's about 146,000 kilowatt-hours. Greenhouse gas reduction-wise, that's about 21 cars off of the road. So thinking about it in terms of sustainability, it's a great accomplishment. So I would like to just acknowledge that the city has continued to be a great leader. I also want to acknowledge our great partners in this effort, of course, city staff, Southern California Edison, and also here this afternoon are Becky Estrella and Jeff Lawler from the Gas Company back there. They're also our partners. And with that, I'd like to introduce Paun Kunicorn from Edison.
Thank you. Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to thank you, the city, for participating in our Desert City Partnership Program. We have this partnership program since 2009, and just like what Katie had mentioned, we have been working with the city tremendously and helping you, assisting you in reducing your energy consumption, and we're really looking forward in working with you again in the future in order to move you up to the next level. And at this point, I want to give special thanks to the special, to the following city staff in helping us achieving this goal, and those people include Bruce Harry, Bill Oppenheimer, Steve Buchanan, Bud Cobb, and of course, Brett Wilson. And I also want to keep special thanks to the city council and the mayor for providing support and make this partnership possible, and we're really looking forward to work with you to move you up to the next level. At this time, I'd like to introduce Maya Aubrey to go ahead and present the award to the city.
Thank you. On behalf of Southern California Edison, again, we appreciate your participation in the partnership, and I would like to present the award, moving you up to the Silver Level.
Brett, would you like to say a few words?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Just very quickly, to our friends at Edison and everybody in the Desert Cities Energy Partnership, including the Gas Company and all the cities and IID and SEVAG staff, just want to say thank you for this. Also want to thank the council for your leadership and giving us the time and resources to pursue this type of activity to save energy for the city. Also want to thank the Sustainability Subcommittee of the Council, which currently is Councilmember Scott Hines and Ted Wile. They spend a lot of time on various energy projects, so thanks to all the council again for your leadership and support for staff, and we're happy to get this award for the city.
Okay, when do we move up to the next level?
We're working on it now. I'm going to go to the I'm going to go back to my desk and try to get us up to the next level.
Turn off those lights, huh?
Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Brett. Mayor, Scott?
I'd also like to recognize somebody who's very key in this process and a lot of what we've been doing, and that's Gordon Muller. Gordon served with me on the Energy Commission for quite a long time, too, and we did a lot of meetings and work on this. And just in his memory, I'd like to acknowledge Gordy and what he did to help earn this award as well.
Thank you. I'm sure we all feel the same way. Okay, we're now done with the informal presentations, and we'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is non-agenda public comments. And this is time available to all of you if you'd like to speak on an item that is not currently on the agenda for today, and we'd like to have you keep your comments to three minutes and come forward and give your name and address. For those of you who have filled out request forms, we'll start with those, and then if there are any of you that have not filled out one, we'll certainly continue with you. But the first request is Frank Taylor. Afternoon, Frank.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Taylor, and I reside in Palm Desert. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Mr. City Manager, this is a request for a study session or a new business item at a future date regarding a conceptual program about unmanned aerial systems. There's no funding is being requested, and I've provided a copy of the request to the city clerk with contact information. For those of you who have not met me before, I retired as a captain with the Sheriff's Department last year after almost 29 years of service to the local communities in the valley. The majority of my law enforcement career was spent within the valley. I'm now part of Community Safety Consulting Group, which includes several valley residents who also honorably served within the public safety arena. Our group is currently volunteering our time locally to not only help increase public safety, but also to assist governmental and public agencies to look at the viability of an unmanned aerial system in the Coachella Valley. Local agencies have been, become interested in unmanned system technology and potentially to potentially reduce some costs by taking a new approach to educate the public and stakeholders first. As an example, it's anticipated these systems will not replace any current aerial services, but about, they can accomplish about 30% of current search and aerial operations at about 2% of the cost. That still leaves about 70% of the operations conducted by conventional means, both ground and aerial personnel, but may show significant savings in the future while helping save lives. It can also be noted that they're anticipating the unmanned aerial system industry over the next 10, 15 years is estimated to reach about $100 billion. Several local public safety agencies are giving their support of this conceptual program. We've given several presentations, including one in front of the public, Coachella Valley Associated Governments Public Safety Commission, where Mayor Potem Smotrich was present, showing how the concept focuses on four specific areas: search and rescue, disaster preparedness, public safety emergencies, and the education of governmental officials, the public, and other stakeholders regarding the 2015 integration of unmanned aerial systems into the national airspace. If you're unaware, federal law was passed in 2012 requiring the FAA to not only allow public agencies to immediately begin using unmanned systems, but also prepare a plan by September of 2015 to integrate unmanned systems commercially into the national airspace. State and local officials have already begun looking at laws and ordinances to restrict this, and we feel an educational process ahead of time will be very beneficial to those making those decisions in the future. Therefore, we respectfully request the opportunity to offer our presentation at a future study session or by means of a new business item. We believe our expertise will help governmental officials increase their understanding of unmanned systems so they can weigh in not only on the concept and possible future local ordinances, but also on the future commercial integration of unmanned systems within the Coachella Valley. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next request is from Dick Baxley.
Good afternoon. My name is Dick Baxley. I reside in Palm Desert, California, and today I am here on behalf of the YMCA to thank you for your participation and working with us to operate a couple of operations here in the city. So if I may start with a history. In 1996, we opened the Rancho Mirage Child Development Center at Rancho Mirage Elementary School. City of Rancho Mirage provided funding for the summer programming. The children love to participate in their Christmas and July event, and they really loved hearing stories told by Councilman Alan Seaman. In 2006, we started the ACES Program. That's the After School Safety and Education Program Partnership with the Palm Springs Unified School District. Rancho Mirage Elementary was one of the first eight ACES programs that provide after-school programs, and the family YMCA now provides all 21 Palm Springs Unified School District programs. Currently, the ACES Program has 93 students in grades five, the fifth, first through fifth, excuse me, enrolled. The academic enrichment opportunities available for these students include academic success and guidance using laptop computers, photography, coast-to-coast soccer instruction, award-winning robotics, dance, art, and hip-hop, gardening, anti-bullying, and gang prevention speakers talk to the students about the effects of their choices. Dr. Kevin Strong and Dunk the Junk Program visiting next week will help student, educate students on the importance of combining nutrition and physical education. For community service, we send letters to the troops in 29 Palms, the rescue mission for our Thanksgiving Day project, and Valentine's for vets. We currently have funding requests into the city for Rancho Mirage High School students' participation in the YMCA Youth and Government Program and for upcoming day camps. We, on behalf of the Y, thank you so very much for your assistance, your guidance, and we do look forward to continuing our relationship with you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dick. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any non-agenda items Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to the next item, which is city council comments. And I'll begin with Iris.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Well, Rancho Mirage, needless to say, is a very proud city. Not only are we conserving energy, but we're also doing a variety of other things, including fighting air pollution. We are extra proud of a particular program, and it is one where lawn mowers can be turned in and exchanged for new lawn mowers that are energy efficient and are less polluting. Over the last 11 years, over 50,000 lawn mowers have been replaced through this lawn mower exchange program, and in the last year, 4,000 have been replaced just over the last year. This is a major milestone in the South Coast air basin, one we're very proud to be a part of. And the new lawn mowers are clean air electric models. They are highly efficient, they are lighter, they are quieter, and they are easier to operate. The old lawn mowers are destroyed, and in exchange, the owners can get a 75% discount on new lawn mowers. They are cordless, and they are rechargeable. They are replaced actually by Black &amp; Decker or Green Station models. And as I say, they will receive up to 75% off of the sticker price. So when you turn in your old lawn mower, it's interesting because you don't even have to get out of your car. People will come over, they'll remove the lawn mower from your trunk or the back of your truck, they will drain it of the fluids, and they will swap it with a new lawn mower, and the new lawn mower will still be in the box. What is really amazing, and most people don't think about, is that one gasoline lawn mower can emit the same pollution yearly as driving a car 22,000 miles. It's quite remarkable when you think of it that way, and what is even nicer is that the same program holds true and is offered for leaf blowers. Since 2006, 10,000 blowers have been exchanged, and it's so good to hear that over 350 tons of pollutants are eliminated from our air annually. So if you happen to be the gardener, or you can talk to your own gardener who might be using an old-fashioned lawn mower, just tell him this is a win-win situation so we can all breathe more easily. Check out how to return your, and exchange your lawn mower or your leaf blower and get a new one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Dana, I understand Rosie is in the audience to see you today.
Well, Rosie's going to be introduced to all of us today, and she will be introduced by JJ of Bandit's Resort Animal Rescue. No kissing the dog, Dana. What? No kissing the dog. Oh, Rosie. JJ, thank you for coming and introducing us to Rosie. While I hold Rosie, why don't you tell everybody about Bandit's Resort Animal Rescue and what you do and how you do it, and how somebody who is hopefully at this very moment falling in love with Rosie can get ahold of you, and we'll go from there.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank Rancho Mirage. This year, we are Betty White's A Challenge Winner. To date, we were founded in February 7, 2013. To date, we have saved more than 647 lives, though we're at risk of being killed in our local shelters. Rosie was one of those. She had two of the most beautiful babies. She was dumped in the Devor Shelter in San Bernardino County. The shelter was going to put her babies to sleep and place her for adoption. We heard about her through Facebook, and we raced to Devor to save her and her babies. Her babies have since been adopted. They've gone into a wonderful home. She's still with us, and she's looking for her forever home.
For those who don't know, Rancho Mirage picks up $100 toward the cost of any adopted animal for or by a Rancho Mirage resident. And JJ, you've been here a good number of times, and you've brought us some beautiful dogs. We appreciate it. We appreciate working with you and the other agencies trying to find new homes for these animals, and I mean, is this not just the sweetest little thing that will sit on your lap for as long as you want or do? I have a dog named Rosie, who we picked up off the streets about 10 years ago, and now Rosie dominates our house, and I'm sure this Rosie will dominate somebody's house. JJ, thank you very much for bringing Rosie, and we hope to see you again, and keep us posted on Rosie's good fortune, and we do hope that somebody will see this as being their forever dog. Thanks very much, JJ.
Thank you, Dana and Rosie. And now, Scott, do you have any comments?
Just real quick, just a reminder, it's that time of year again to get your flu shots. Hines family all got our flu shots this week. Some were more excited about that than others, but we did it. And just want to remind you, now's the time. Don't wait until everyone's starting to get sick. So most of the places like CVS and Rite Aid and Walgreens have got lots of inventory right now, so be the first to get in and get your flu shot.
Thank you. Ted?
Just a reminder that the restaurant rendezvous is still ongoing. These cards are available both in the lobby and at the library. It's a 20% discount on all of the restaurants on this card. It's terrific. It's been extremely well-received. So there's lots of opportunities to keep some money in your pocket and at the same time have an excellent meal.
Thank you. And I understand about half of the restaurants in Rancho Mirage are on that list, so good choice.
Very extensive.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Last item, just want to remind you all that tickets, tickets still remain for the 2014 Speaker Series. Tickets went on sale this Wednesday, and it was a very brisk selling of tickets, and you still can get tickets by going on the internet to rancho mirage ca.gov. The speakers again are Ashley Judd on January 29, DeeDee Myers on February 19, and on March 19, the daughters of George W. Bush, that'd be Barbara Pierce Bush, and Jenna Hager will be speaking. So remember, tickets through rancho mirage ca.gov. Tickets are $150 for the three series or $60 each, and those are reserved seats. So hurry, if you'd like to see these three, four actually, speakers over the next few months, it'll be a great opportunity. Sure you'll enjoy it. Okay, we'll now move on to the approval of the minutes for the October 3 meeting. Can I have a motion, please, to accept them?
Second.
There's a motion. And a second.
Second.
All in favor, please vote. If you're in favor, don't vote if you're not in favor. And the motion carries 5-0. Next item is the consent calendar, and the consent calendar normally includes items that are brief in scope and routine in nature, and they are normally brought by the city manager, who will discuss them right now, unless there's any items that need to be polled by council. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to not pull an item, but I wanted to just make comment because I wanted to thank two people who are wonderful contributors to our city and help publicize a lot of different things. One is Mike Solange, and one is Carol Ann Zale. Carol is the manager of The River, and something that they've done that is a little different from what we've done in the past, at The River, when you walk to some of the restaurants, you will notice that there are a number of photos that are showing off some of the celebrities that lived in Rancho Mirage, and it's a great way to show people, especially visitors, some of the people that have graced our wonderful city. But it also is a great way to fill some of the windows of the stores that are waiting to be rented, and I wanted to just add a personal thanks to Carol Ann and to Mike Solange because it was a wonderful idea, and it adds a great deal to the shopping center.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar and our city manager, Randy Binder. Randy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Beautiful fall afternoon in the fine city of Rancho Mirage. We have a lot of government business to accomplish this afternoon. First item on your consent calendar is waiving full reading of the ordinances that are introduced or adopted pursuant to the consent calendar today. Item number two on your consent calendar is a mid-year budget adjustment to transfer RSVP funds to the SAF discretionary fund. RSVP would receive $2,000 this year and be asked to submit future funding requests through the SAF program for future years. Item number three on your consent calendar is approval of consultant's request for waiver of certain contract insurance requirements. One is for Evergreen Recycling Solutions. They provide services to the city related to waste management services. This was requested by Mr. Bruce Harry, Director of Public Works. Second request for waiver is from HDL, which is a California corporation that provides services related to property tax management in the City of Rancho Mirage, requested by Isaiah Hagerman, our finance director. And the third request for waiver is Quality Code Publishing, QCP, requested by Cindy Scott, our city clerk. QCP performs the ordinance updating of professional services in the City of Rancho Mirage. And on the advice of the city attorney's office, the risks to these waivers appear to be minimal, given the nature of the services that these consultants are involved in. Item number four on your consent calendar is approval, finally approval already, of Final Track Map 36235. This is the Revel Project on Clancy Lane, 18 acres, 32 lots. The zone change was approved back in 2010, and the development plan for the homes on this project was approved, I believe, in September, last month of this year. The final map, we haven't had many final maps come before the city. Since the economy's turned, we'll have more of these. The purpose of the final map on the consent calendar is to find all of the, find that the developer has complied with all of the conditions of approval. There is one condition of approval regarding improvements on Verbenia Road, and this was a condition that was added at the council meeting when the project was approved a couple of years ago, and I would like to- And I would like to have our city engineer, Bill Enos, give you a short report on how, what that condition says and how staff plans on implementing it. Bill?
Bill? Thank you, Randy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Condition number 32A on Verbena Road, as Randy said, was added at the council meeting. That condition reads, "Subject to staff approval," this is on page 42 of your report near the middle. "Subject to staff approval, applicant shall improve the south side of Verbena Road, including curb and gutter and paving to join from the emergency gate to Monterey Avenue, except such improvements shall not include removing the 115,000-volt utility pole located there. The pole may remain in a small raised island with a right turn lane south of it. This condition is intended to only require basic street improvements from the eastern tract boundary to Monterey Avenue." So, the intention was, as shown in the exhibit that's, that's on the screen, shows the right turn lane south of the existing 115,000-volt pole. The project was approved in July of 2010. At that time, there was just one pole in the way. Since that time, Edison's done, they have numerous poles to the south of this place, and there was actually one additional pole added, so now there are two poles in the way of the street. Those are both shown on the visual. The black poles are the existing, and staff met with Edison, staff and the developer both, met with Edison in the field, with their senior folks to, to select the alignment to best implement the condition. And they told us that for safety reasons, they would not allow the wooden pole to remain. They were concerned about someone hitting the guy wires or the wooden pole, and that would knock it down and cause, 115,000 volts, a lot of power, and cause damage to none of, endanger themselves and the traveling public. So they insisted that a steel pole would be replaced. Also, the, the second pole would have to be relocated. The cost of that's estimated $150,000. As the condition says, the developer is not responsible for that cost, therefore, that cost would have to be borne by the city of Rancho Mirage. And so, investigating that alternative, a second alternative was investigated, what, well, if we're going to spend $150,000, what would it cost to just move everything out of the way and build the standard street through? And so we investigated that. And again, as shown, the two existing black poles were both removed, replaced with steel poles, and the cost of that alternative and build the standard roadways approximately $250,000. Again, the developer's not responsible for those costs per the condition, so that would have to be borne by the city. Based on those high costs and the benefit received, staff's recommendation, it's not feasible at this time to do that, to move those poles and to build those street improvements, but rather, staff required the developer to build these street improvements on Verbena, the full street improvements right up to those guy wires and end them at that point, to construct a guardrail to safely protect those and to create a long taper of raised markers so that no one would accidentally drive into those poles. Then the thought is that in the future, when Monterey, south of Verbena, is improved, that would be probably a regionally funded project, at least 50%, perhaps 75% would be paid by regional funds and not city funds, and that would take care of relocating those poles and connecting Verbena up. Staff determined that the, any small amount of additional traffic caused by the exit only from Revel, the tract in consideration, would be very small, and the intersection will continue to function safely until that future project occurs. So again, it's staff's recommendation that, that those relocation, those power poles be delayed until a future project, and that asking the developer to improve Verbena up to the poles as well as improve the radius. Can you show the zero-cost alternative, please? Staff's recommending that, again, the cost to the city is zero of this alternative. Developer builds it right up to the poles and then improves the radius to make the intersection safer and function better. That's staff's recommendation to fulfill the intent of that condition.
Thank you, Bill. Have we discussed this with the developer, and have they agreed to it?
Yes.
Yes, developer's on board with this. He met, they met with Edison with us, and we really struggled to find a solution to this, and developer's fully on board. The improvements of, the plans have all been designed, and everything's approved for this.
Okay, and you're confident that this is the safest way to go and provide the protection around those poles?
Yes, we are providing a guardrail, actually, an angled guardrail, so if someone does plow into it, they'll be diverted away from it, not, not dead-end into it. But yes, we do believe it'll be safe. There'll be raised markers, three-foot-high raised markers. Nobody will accidentally hit those poles.
Thank you. Any questions to Bill while he's here? Okay, let's move on with the consent calendar. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you very much, Bill, Mr. Mayor. So, item number five on your consent calendar is a request that the council approve the Special Assistance Fund Subcommittee Recommendation Modifications to the SAF Program. Following on page 5-1 of your staff report, these modifications would include a clarification that the 20% set aside for discretionary funds previously approved as part of the budget, that this potentially may change in accordance with the SAF Subcommittee, City Council recommendations in the future. Second change would be that funding requests submitted after the SAF application process has closed will be considered only under the following conditions. One, that the request may be made a minimum 14 days prior to a council meeting. Two, that upon receipt of a letter from a nonprofit, staff would request the applicant to provide a written application for the SAF Subcommittee to evaluate and provide proof of current 501(c)(3) status. And then the SAF Subcommittee would evaluate the application and provide a recommendation for council consideration. Another modification is that the maximum request allowed be $5,000. The Subcommittee would recommend to the council a specific amount, not to exceed that amount, and that the award would be at the discretion of the full council. Another change would be a new rule. Nonprofits with a business established in residence in the city of Rancho Mirage would be required to be in compliance with the applicable CCNRs if it's a residential dwelling in a gated community. And then also that homeowners operating a nonprofit business in a residence shall obtain a home occupation permit. Item number six on your consent calendar is an ordinance authorizing specified city staff members to require a certified arborist be used to abate certain trees which endanger the public safety. We have found that in some situations where trees or shrubs have grown in a manner that requires specific training to address potential safety hazards, we don't have anything in the code right now that require, that allows staff to require the person that trims or directs the trimming to be a certified arborist, and that sometimes these trees are inadvertently trimmed that make the condition more dangerous than what we started with, or make the trees weak. So this would allow staff to implement that safety feature. Item number seven in your consent calendar, approval of contracts and purchase orders. And item number eight are your purchase orders and demands, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Anybody in the audience have a question?
I'm sorry, item number nine are the demands. Item number eight are the purchase orders.
Lucky you caught that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar?
I'll second.
And the motion carries 5-0. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting today. And item number 10 is the consideration of a preliminary development plan, case number PDP 13004, and environmental assessment case number EA 13005, Whitewater Park Expansion. And I believe our planning manager, Bud Kopf, is going to kick this one off, so Bud, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the council. This park expansion plan project incorporates about three acres of additional land into the overall comprehensive development plan for Whitewater Park, bringing the total to 10 acres. The items for your consideration this afternoon include a preliminary development plan and an environmental assessment associated with that project. This project has evolved over the past year, beginning in July of 2012, when the council conducted a workshop to discuss potential improvements to Whitewater Park. Some of the desired amenities at the time included an amphitheater, a dog park, enhanced children's play area, additional parking, and a fitness circuit. The city council gave direction that staff should develop several design alternatives for council and parks and recreation consideration, and over the next 90 days, staff developed three park designs, along with a photo essay of various park amenities that could be considered in the expansion project. In October of last year, the city council and Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed three park expansion alternatives, and alternative number three was determined to be the proposed alter, the preferred alternative. The city council directed staff to work with the Parks and Recreation Commission in determining if any changes needed to be made to that preferred alternative. And we met with the Parks and Recreation Commission on two occasions, once in November 2012, and a second occasion in January of 2013, and the Parks and Recreation Commission again reviewed that preferred alternative and unanimously endorsed it. Following that meeting, staff posted and circulated a request for proposals to recruit a design team that could formalize the preferred alternative concept, and proposals were due early March of last year. In May of this, I'm sorry, in February of this year, in May of this year, the city council awarded the design contract to Herman Design Group, and since the award of the contract, we've been on an aggressive design and development schedule. As you will see in our presentation this afternoon, the park design thoughtfully integrates the old with the new, the built environment with the natural environment, and passive with active recreational areas. The amphitheater and promenade are two signature elements of the park and will provide new opportunities for recreation to residents of the city. The children's play area will be relocated and enhanced with new theme equipment, and a dog park is shown at the east end of the park. The architectural review board reviewed and unanimously endorsed this project in September, and on September 25th, the planning commission recommended approval of the park expansion project to the city council. Included in their motion was to provide community outreach explaining where the money's coming from and how it's going to be used for this project, require fencing around the children's play area, suggested significant security and maintenance on site, including lighting and the use of security cameras, to give further consideration to the size, maintenance, and location of the dog park, and to plant trees in the backstop area where the baseball field's currently located. After the planning commission meeting, staff continued to work with the consultant and fine-tuned the estimate of probable construction cost. Staff worked with the finance department to identify the most up-to-date figures in relation to the funds available for the construction of this project. On October, just recently, October 3rd, we met with the budget subcommittee to review the consultant's most recent estimate of probable construction cost and identified available construction funds for this project. The construction, or the consultant's estimate of probable construction cost includes a 10% contingency and has continued to rise from 2.9 million on September 3rd to 3.8 million on October 3rd. The budget subcommittee reviewed and discussed each of the consultant's potential cost-reduction recommendations and agreed that there were certain cost-reduction items that should be made, reducing the estimate of probable construction cost to 3.3 million. The city council then held a study session on October 7th of this month to discuss the consultant's latest estimate of probable construction cost and discuss the recommendations of the budget subcommittee, review available construction funding, and to provide staff with direction. The city council reviewed each of the recommended cost savings item, cost saving items, and made the recommendation to delete the dog park, delete the permeable pavers from the new parking area, economize the amphitheater back-of-house buildings by using split-face or CMU block instead of cast-in-place concrete walls, and to delete the proposed chair storage area and the purchase of 375 chairs. The recommended total savings cost of eliminating those features is just a little bit short of $300,000. As a result of these cost-saving measures, certain design elements of the park's site plan will need to be modified, such as the area that was proposed for the dog park. These recommended minor changes to the project do not affect the negative declaration of environmental impact as recommended for approval in your agenda package this afternoon or the recommendation to adopt that document by the planning commission on September 25th. In addition, the city council recommended that a court to accommodate the sport of pickleball be added. If pickleball is added, staff does recommend that we add this feature through a minor modification application for sequel purposes. Based on the above city council recommendations, the construction budget has been revised to about $3.5 million. Bruce may be able to clarify this. I don't believe that involves, that includes the pickleball, but it, the revision comes to 3.5 million. Funding for the project would be from fees in the Quimby Development Impact Fee and Vehicle License Fee funds. Staff believes that the development plan captures the essence of Rancho Mirage quality and will be a centerpiece for community events to be enjoyed for many years to come. If the preliminary development plan and environmental assessment are approved today, final construction, bid, and specification documents will be completed by the end of this year. A ceremonial unveiling of the expansion will be held on November 16th, and construction will begin in early March and be completed by October of next year. If, I don't know if Bruce wants to add anything to the presentation, before I turn it over to Chris Herman, who's the principal in charge of our consulting team.
Sure, Bud, thank you. I'll just add one thing on the, regarding the pickleball court. We did discuss with the council at the study session, the ability to install two pickleball courts, which would be approximately $100,000. It was estimated to be about just under $60,000 to build one. If we built two, there'd be some economies of scale where we could probably build it less than 120 for two, so I'm thinking around 100, 110,000. What we can do is we can design the pickleball area, go through the environmental process, have this incorporated into the construction documents prior to bidding, bid it as a bid alternate, see how the costs come in, bring it back to the council for recommendation and award. If there is adequate funds within the 3.5 million to build the pickleball courts, we'll do so. If not, the council will have an option to add additional funding to build those courts. So, that's our plan right now, is what we'll do, is we'll bring that back to the council with that recommendation.
Bruce, since the pickleball courts are going to be located where the dog park was originally planned, have we already taken the funding out of, for the dog park, so one doesn't offset the other?
We're going to be meeting with the consultant to go over some of the additional things that we've gone through with regards to his original proposal. There are some things that he's been asked to do that are beyond his original scope. There is some cost savings. We will work with him on that, and then we'll be coming back to you to see if there's any additional costs, but we don't really know that right now, whether there's going to be any additional costs.
Thank you. Bud?
Yeah, and I'd also like to mention one other item that was discussed in this morning study session on the park project. One additional item would be to recommend approval of the footprint of the new children's play area, but not the specific play equipment within that play area. That was, that was discussed this morning. And that concludes my part of the presentation. I'd like to introduce Chris Herman, principal in charge of our consulting, of our consulting team, and turn the presentation over to Chris to show some highlights of the Whitewater Park Expansion Plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel and staff for this opportunity. Again, it's just an exciting project, and we've brought with us today two other members of our team, Mike McAuliffe with McAuliffe Architects, and we have Mike Peroni here with the Alton Group. If there are any questions that are specifically addressed to the areas of expertise, we'll let them answer those. We have a presentation to run through, about 15 slides of the project, to review with you all this, where we are now today with, with the presentation. It should be coming up. It should be coming up.
I can run it for you if you'd like.
Uh, it's not even projected. Oh, there we go. Okay. Great, thank you. Advancing. There we go. So, what we have in front of us right now is the overall site plan has been discussed. To the west is the additional parking lot and grand arrival to the park, which will be comprised of new accent paving at the end. be comprised of new accent paving at the intersection of Santa Sinto and Button Road. They'll be lined with date palms, which will recall the historical significance of the Rancho, Rancho Chiquito building, and will be carried through the park project as a theme tree. The promenade generates, begins a starting point at the drop-off area that you'll see at this location, and the promenade is lined with shade trees. There are tipuana, tipu trees, which provide shade and color and are a great opportunity to give users of the park a feel that would be in keeping with what we want to do in terms of the overall experience of the park. This particular location is where the amphitheater is, and this is where the new child's play area is located. We mentioned additional parking being created over in this area, and each of these orange locations are fitness course stopping points. Illustrated on this drawing are a couple of examples of what those fitness courses would look like, and some image photos on the lower left-hand describe what you might see in a grand arrival sequence. We've held apart a location that's not in the budget, but a future location for a water feature element. And as I mentioned, the entrance to the promenade will take, to the amphitheater will take place right off the promenade at the same elevation. This is a kind of a bird's eye perspective view of the entrance as it could be envisioned with a water feature at the drop-off area. It's a place where people could be shuttled to the park, dropped off, picked up, et cetera. This is a view as you would enter the promenade from the, from the drop-off area, what we call the grand arrival. In the background, you can see a silhouette of what the amphitheater would look like. To your left is a silhouette of what the, where the location of the Rancho Chiquito building is located, lined with date palm trees and these concrete bollards, accent paving, potentially some kind of water feature in the future, which might be a fog effect, LED type of a thing with an interactive water element. This is a quick idea of what the promenade will be located, looking like with the new trees, it'll shade it, bench seating, bollard lighting, accent paving, and trash receptacle strategically located in a pattern that will play off of the architectural lines of the project. This view is to the east, to the right, we would be just past the entrance to the promenade. To the left, you'll see the basketball courts. Play area itself has been discussed in the study session. This is the generalized area. It's, it's been envisioned to be a natural play experience. We've integrated mounding and artificial turf with climbing boulders, natural boulders, and new innovative play equipment that will offer an experience for all age groups. And we will also be incorporating some new changes to that after the study session we've had today. The amphitheater perspective sketch gives you an idea of what this, the structure is going to be. The overall idea of the amphitheater is to keep it integrated within the park, to make it feel like it's part of the park, and the use of landscaping and berming and settling it down into the landscape achieves that, along with helping us with some of the noise issues that we have when, when new sound comes out of that location. The, the design of this, of this floor plan for the amphitheater, you can see here is what we would call the mezzanine entry, which takes place off the promenade. It would be considered at grade. The lower level, the lower bowl, is about four and a half feet lower than that grade, and then we rise back up about four and a half feet to the upper terrace, which is an overflow area for the amphitheater. The lower bowl with thick seating can hold up to 400 chairs. The upper bowl has an additional 180 or so spaces. But it's been designed with complete flexibility so that we can have events there that the city has both formally and informally. And during its non-use time, people will have the opportunity to come in and relax and enjoy the experience of just being in a place where they could read a book, sit up against a wall, et cetera. This illustrates a little bit of the back of the house and staging area. What you see here are restrooms, men's and women's restrooms, the side stage area, and the stage itself. The back of house has been designed to incorporate what the programming phase has revealed to us with the work that you all have done. That is, that we want to have some events here where, where groups can come in and do a nice performance. And with that, we have makeup rooms, we have changing rooms for principals and children, complete with bathrooms, and places where they can do their makeup as well. This is a view of the upper area, just gives you an idea of the forms and the shapes of what's going on. One of the things I didn't mention to you is that there's a use of pivot doors for these side-stage areas, which allows opportunities for dance troops to come and go, and they can exit and enter the stage in a way in which is very seamless. This also shows where we will be locating AV equipment, and that the shape of the structure's roof has been designed and engineered so that sound is reflected and captured as much as possible, along with the berming and the elevation to stay within the theater environment. The overall depth of the, of the amphitheater from stage to the back of the upper level is only 85 feet. So what we're going to have is a very intimate experience for those who are users. This gives you an idea of what it would be like to enter at the mezzanine level of the project. You can see some of the different seating opportunities there are. There's, there's informal seating with just ice chests, there's fixed seating, there'll be blankets, and we also integrate one tree, maybe a specimen tree that's high branching, or two, so that this really is integrated into the park site itself. Materials are going to be those that will set this apart in the public spaces. We're hoping for a cast-in-place concrete with its natural and its feel, it uses form liners. It's, it's a way in which we can really define it as something unique for the city. We're using a RhinoBond metal fabric that is going to be cladding the overall shade cover and amphitheater structure for the project. And then integration of natural materials into the landscape, such as these, not maybe at this scale, but these will be used as ways in which we can integrate roof structures into landscape. The dog park, while it's not going to be in this approval, we've illustrated a couple of what some of the elements would have been in this dog park. And then a feel for some of the landscape materials, there's an opportunity to do a little bit more landscaping in areas such as the Rancho Chiquito area. We're hoping that we can put in some interpretive opportunities, do some aroma and healing materials that are native to the desert or are available in the desert and do well, give people an opportunity to tour that area and really understand some options that exist today here in the park. With that, I would be open to any questions that there might be with council, but that concludes our presentation.
Good presentation. Any questions? One, one question that has not been discussed yet in all of our meetings, is there any way to measure the potential noise impact from the facility on the Magnesia Falls area?
You know, I think that's a good question for our, for our environmental consultant, Mike Peroni. We did do sound studies as part of the environmental process, and he might be able to answer that in a little bit more detail.
We retained the services of Kuntzman Associates who went around the park and identified sensitive receptors, and they picked the locations where the sound was most likely to go in consideration of the design of the amphitheater and the way it's configured. In their analysis, they picked the three, three locations, and they ran a model projecting the, the sound out, and set criterion which the city can use to control the sound. The belief is that the sound would stay within the regime of the amphitheater in a reasonable manner. If the council wishes, we can send the consultant up into the Magnesia Falls area and model a special modeling for noise impacts up in that canyon.
Okay, appreciate that. Just raised the question because in the past, we have had people in that area be concerned about the noise level coming from areas such as the river, and the river is considerably closer than, than the park is, of course, but we're just trying to get some ideas to what the impact might be.
We could do additional analysis specifically to that. The explanation I got from the noise professional was that, given the orientation and design of the amphitheater, it was oriented away from the canyon, which is a different consideration that would occur at the river. So, I mean, I actually had them go over and look at the river, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
If I, if I could add to that, I'd like to point out a couple of mitigation measures in the environmental document that deal with noise. On page 10-111 of your agenda, one of the noise mitigation measures is that all of the amphitheater events would be measured, basically limit the source of noise from the amphitheater to an average level of 75 decibels and a maximum of 95 decibels is measured from the center of the top seating area, a distance of about 110 feet. So noise levels will be monitored basically at 30-minute intervals during the events. Also, another thing that I should point out is that our recommendation is that the city or city staff be in control of the actual noise or amplification equipment, so that if we do have readings that exceed certain amounts, the city is in charge of turning it down, not, not somebody that's actually hosting the event.
Great, thank you bud. Any other questions from council?
I just have one question.
Yes Dana?
And what has more to do with the motion that we'll be addressing, does the approval, does the recommendation of the planning commission with respect to adding security and maintenance, does that impact the motion that we've talked about? And I ask you Randy.
Well, the planning commission's recommendation includes those specific items, so if you accept their recommendation and move, I would say yes, it would include those.
If we just make a motion to approve the preliminary development plan, would that include their recommendations, or could we deal with them separately down the road when we address specific issues related to security and maintenance?
Oh, I see. Those, you would have to address those separately.
Okay.
Yes.
That works.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I don't, yes Scott?
Chris, I just wanted to compliment your group and also staff for the work that you've done. I mean, I just, we set out with a pretty broad task, and you really helped to guide us and refine where we are today, and I am really, really pleased with the outcome. I, I think that this will be an amazing community gathering space, and we'll be able to provide cultural opportunities to folks that may not otherwise be able to, to access that. I love that the park is truly multi-generational, where grandparents can come with their grandkids and have a wonderful time. I think it'll improve the art affair. So just thumbs up all the way around, and just almost giddy with excitement to get going on this.
Yeah, thank you very much Scott, and I got to take my hat off to a team that you guys chose. We've got, you know, a group of guys and, and women that really just dug in and, and made this what it hopefully will be, is something you'll be proud of for multiple generations, and thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who would like to speak on this item. I do have a request from Nola Larri. Nola?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, who'd like to come forward?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kate. Nice to be here, council members and staff. I'm Carol Hoaksprung. I'm in the Magnesia Falls Cove. I live on San Gorgonio Road. And I agree with Scott's comments. I've been involved in the last couple of months, and it's wonderful, the evolution of what's happening here. So we thank you very, very much for everybody's involvement and listening to everyone. I've mentioned this concept to a few people in the real estate business and my colleagues, and everybody's going like, oh my word, where is the park and what's going to be happening? So I think the word's going to be out, and it's a thumbs up definitely to the city. So my question is one dealing with being a member of the Trails Commission and having been at the nice, wonderful presentation of the CV Link the other night. Is there any way that the trail, CV Link, is going to be any part of this park? Is it going to be on the backside by the wash? Has there been any consideration of how the link will be coming through that area of Rancho Mirage? That's my question.
Bud, you want to address that issue?
Certainly. We have considered the potential CV Link alignment along the back of the park. This proposed park plan would not affect that project in any sort of negative way. In other words, the CV Link project could be accommodated easily. In fact, there are also opportunities, if the CV Link project does happen, to even put in maybe some plug-in electric vehicle charging stations along the trail, some pullouts for parking and that sort of thing. But I just wanted to be, to be clear, and I, and I did distribute a letter today at your dais that is from the Coachella Valley Water District, and they also had mentioned the CV Link project. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, that's a totally separate project from this park project. The Coachella Valley Association of Governments is the lead agency processing the CV Link project, and they'll process their own environmental documents and hold their own public hearings on that. But this project certainly can accommodate it if that ultimately is the alignment.
Fantastic. We as Trails, Dennis is a member of the Trails Commission as well, and we were totally excited to see that project. So we hope that that happens in the near future, and I think it's all going to be great for Rancho Mirage. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address this item? Yes, Ann?
Anna. Ann Winchester, the Rancho Mirage Community Association, and I live on Sahara. I too want to thank everybody for the process that has gone forth to work with the park situation. I also want to thank one of the members of our board, Rose Marie McDowell, who spent a number of hours researching dog parks. And you all received a copy of that at your last study session. And us being able to go forward with your staff and with each of you, I'm looking at you, Councilman Hobart, for the necessity of having a dog park. We're not against a dog park in any way, shape, or form, and I hope once the project for the Whitewater Park is completed, that maybe that will be the next project that the city wants to undertake, because I think we all agree, it's a necessity, and it's something that I think that is a responsibility too, for Rancho Mirage to provide part of the dog park, what would you call it? It's a...
Amenity.
What?
Amenity.
Yeah, amen, thank you. A facility and amenity, whatever we want to call it. But again, thank you very much, and I think it's brilliant that you're going to put in two racquetball courts. We certainly...
Pickle.
Pickleball courts. We certainly would endorse that, and we will be on those courts, putting together some groups to play, and we'll be enjoying it immensely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope you're the first one on the pickleball court.
Carol and I are already planned.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for comments or a motion, if you have any. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would, well, we can comment afterwards, let me just get the motion that staff has prepared.
Okay.
I move we adopt a negative declaration of environmental impact for environmental assessment case number EA 13005. And I also move, we should do that separately?
Yeah, we should do those separately. Two separate motions. So should we vote on the first motion? Is there a second please? There's the second, please vote. Motion carries 5-0, and Dana, you want to continue?
Yes, I would move that we approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 3004, based on the content and finding in the staff report, subject to the following modifications. One, delete the dog park and direct staff to add two lighted pickleball courts through a minor modification. Two, delete the permeable pavers from the new parking lot and use asphaltic concrete in their place. Three, economize the amphitheater back-of-house buildings, buildings' construction materials by substituting split-face CMU or similar in lieu of cast-in-place concrete walls. Four, delete the proposed chair storage space and the purchase of 375 chairs. And five, approve the footprint of the new children's play area, but not the specific play equipment at this time.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ted, did you second?
I did.
Okay, please vote. Okay, please vote. Okay, the motion carries five zero. Just to give you a little bit more information, hopefully the process will continue to where we will actually break ground on the new park in the spring of 2014, and we would hope to have the park completed by next year's art affair. So it should be a great art affair utilizing the new site. So-
And you know what, Mr. Mayor? If you remember this time last year, when you first had a presentation on this, it was Bud Cop's original conceptual plan that he presented in front of the council and the Parks Commission, and basically that's how the consultant, he used that as the framework for the plan, so. Good job Bud, thank you.
Good job Bud. We'll get you working on the next part fairly soon.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I may make one more comment, for all those people, and especially parents and grandparents who are planning to visit our park in the near future, I wanted to make mention that in our study session, we did go into great detail about the kind of sports equipment and children's play area equipment that's going to be used. We're spending a great deal of time investigating that, so that equipment will be provided for ages of every level, and hopefully we're also going to be implementing a small area for children with special needs, so that we will be able to accommodate everyone, and no one will feel left out. Thank you.
Thank you. They better not plan on coming too soon. Okay, we'll now move on to the action calendar. Item number eleven, which is the consideration of Special Assistance Funds, SAF awards, and discretionary funds, and that'll be brought to us by Gloria Griego, Contract Specialist. Gloria?
Mayor, City Council, every year we award SAF funds to nonprofit organizations. First, I'd like to start with thanking the Subcommittee, Councilwoman Iris Smotrich and Councilman Ted Wild for the hard work they put into the evaluation process. It took them about fifteen hours to confer and provide recommendations. In July, staff mailed seventy-five applications and received forty-four requests totaling three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. The SAF program for this fiscal year is funded at a hundred and fifty thousand for SAF funds and fifty thousand for discretionary funds. Following the receipt of the applications, the Subcommittee members developed recommendations based on priority levels for council review. In addition to the SAF recommendations, the Subcommittee also received a letter from Big Horn Institute for a five thousand dollar funding request to rebuild the barn that burned recently. Included in the staff report are the funding criteria, the SAF recommendations, and the letter from Big Horn Institute. The Subcommittee recommends that council award SAF funds for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and five thousand to Big Horn Institute. I will now turn this over to Councilman Wild for comments.
Thank you Gloria. I would like to also thank Gloria Griego for the outstanding job she did, and the many hours she dedicated to this task. Gloria did an excellent job, and thank you. And I can't thank Mayor Protem Smotrich enough. She spent many, many hours, not only making telephone calls, but interviewing people, and went way beyond the calling duty, and Iris did just a fabulous job. I personally found the experience fulfilling and rewarding, to help so many worthwhile charities. I only wish we could have helped more. With the opening of the Ritz next year and the approving economy, hopefully we will have a larger budget and contribute to many more worthwhile causes. The SAF Subcommittee passionately fulfilled its fiduciary responsibility in a fair, just, and equitable manner. We did not allow political or partisan influence, our decision. We are dealing with our residents' money, your money, we consider the responsibility of immense importance. We took into consideration the wants and needs of every applicant. We consider their contribution to the city of Rancho Mirage, and we consider their contribution to society as a whole. As Gloria mentioned, there were seventy-five applications and forty-four requests for funds in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Due to budgetary constraints, we were able to distribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or forty-one percent, which was a hundred percent of our immediate available funds. In addition, the city has fifty thousand dollars earmarked for discretionary funds, of which five thousand was awarded to the Big Horn Institute, due to the fire that destroyed their barn and left no area for protection of the feed for the sheep. The word discretionary can be misinterpreted. The guidelines call for emergency situations, unplanned deficits, unanticipated costs, and circumstances which nonprofits did not anticipate. The SAF Subcommittee considers all applications that were submitted within the required timeframe. This allows the Contract Specialist to do the due diligence to verify the eligibility of the nonprofit status. That cannot be done by a request from the podium that does not allow time to complete the review process in order to make a recommendation to the city council. A hasty decision would breach our responsibility and the confidence of our residents. I am certain that some charities desired a greater contribution that was allocated and are disappointed. We wish it was possible, but as I mentioned, the funds are just not available. Every charity feels their need is an emergency, and will include that in their request. Fairness to all was our theme. Our city is one of the most charitable in the valley, and we are very proud of that distinction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the city of Rancho Mirage, and the entire city council for your generosity.
Thank you Ted. Are you going to list the individual donations, Iris? Are you gonna take care of that?
Yeah, I will do that. But first, I wanted to say a few words also, and I also want to thank Ted and Gloria. They were quite remarkable to work with. Couldn't find two more conscientious people who were more caring and more deliberate in their decision-making. And although I made a lot of phone calls, Ted actually went out in person and investigated location, just to make sure that we knew exactly what was involved with the requests and the people that were behind the request. So I wanted to thank them also. But I also wanted to mention that last year, it was decided to create a new funding breakdown. This was done because we needed to distribute funds more widely and include more organizations. Last year, we limited it to food and shelter, and a lot of organizations did not even apply because they felt they did not fit into that category, and indeed, they did not. So we decided that we would allocate fifty percent to food and shelter, twenty percent to health care, twenty percent to seniors and children, five percent to the arts and culture, and five percent to miscellaneous. And as was mentioned, we allocated our funds very carefully and looked at every organization where so many aspects of our giving were taken into consideration. I also need to say that some organizations are national organizations and receive funds nationally. Some are local and depend on local funding only. This was something that we looked at very carefully also, and we took into consideration. In some cases, if we had given to an organization in the past, we sometimes felt we wanted to alternate and select another worthy organization that was never funded by us before. The SAF Committee has another opportunity that was to look to an organization working out of their homes. These are organizations that cannot afford or do not have the opportunity to have an office out of their home. And as we all know, that many organizations start on a grassroots level, and their approach is to work at home until they are large enough where they need outside offices. Some, as I say, cannot afford to provide these outside offices, and we do not want to leave them out. One important organization that comes to my mind is a gentleman, Michael New, that came here with his two dogs, Amos and Lola, and they are therapy dogs, and they go to different areas, different facilities, where they spend time with a lot of people with special needs. These are very special people, and they are giving of their time and their efforts, and they certainly need to be included with our SAF funding if possible. Michael New provides a wonderful service to those in need, and he works with his wife out of their home, and they take their jobs very seriously, and we took our job very seriously. So we hope that we can work together again. It was a wonderful experience, it was very time-involving, but it was certainly worth our effort and very rewarding, as Ted has said. We knew we were doing the right thing, and we wish we had a lot more funding that we could disseminate to the entire community. Thank you.
You're not done, are you? Are you gonna name the various organizations and the amount of money?
Yes, I'm gonna go through that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone, if they had any comments about it, this-
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
Okay. We'll take a few minutes now, just to go through the different organizations, to let everyone know just how much money was allocated to each organization and what those organizations were. The Coachella Valley Rescue Mission was given five thousand dollars. Desert AIDS Project, five thousand. Desert ARC, six thousand. Desert Blind and Handicapped Association, five thousand. Desert Cancer Foundation, forty-five hundred. Desert Diabetes Club at Eisenhower Medical Center was given twenty-five hundred. Desert Samaritans for Seniors were given four thousand. DFDD Clinical Services, which stands for We Care Dental, was given five thousand dollars. Family Services of the Desert was given two thousand dollars. ACT for MS, which is Multiple Sclerosis, was given twenty-five hundred. AIDS Assistance Program was given six thousand. Angel View was given six thousand. Arthritis Foundation, four thousand. The Barbara Sinatra Children's Center at Eisenhower, two thousand. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Desert, five thousand. Braille Institute, two thousand. CASA for Riverside County Incorporated is five thousand. And for those people that aren't aware of what CASA is, it is really a group of people that go into the court system to be advocates for children who need advocates in the foster care program. So that is called CASA. Also, the Coachella Valley Autism Society of America, four thousand. Coachella Valley Repertory Theater, twenty-five hundred. Pegasus Writing Academy, five thousand. St. Elizabeth of Hungry Food Pantry, two thousand. Shelter from the Storm, six thousand. Stroke Recovery Center, six thousand. The LGBT Community Center of the Desert, five thousand. The Well in the Desert, six thousand. Tolerance Education Center, twenty-five hundred. Family YMCA of the Desert, four thousand. Find Food Bank, six thousand. Galilee Center, five thousand. Gildes Club Desert Cities, two thousand. Insight, twenty-five hundred. And the Insight organization is for training for the blind and low-vision students. Jewish Family Services, six thousand. Loving All Animals, twenty-five hundred. Martha's Village and Kitchen, five thousand. Turning Heads, twenty-five hundred. United Cerebral Palsy of the Inland Empire, four thousand. And that totals up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. How many organizations was that again?
That was forty-four organizations.
Forty-four, okay. Great job.
That received our funding.
Great. Throughout the whole desert, I think it really meets a lot of needs out there, and of course, the demand for funds now is greater than it's ever been, so.
Absolutely.
Did an excellent job, and as Ted said, hopefully next year, we'll be in a better financial position and be able to give additional funds. We still have some funds in reserve for those special items, and as those come in this year, we'll certainly evaluate them. So any questions from the council on the gifts? Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
That also includes the Big Horn Institute funding?
It does.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, before I cut you off Ted, like I did, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Byard, and I'm with Big Horn Institute, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank you so much for the extra support. We couldn't be doing what we're doing without your help and the help of the community, and we just appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Thank you Amy. Have you been able to raise enough money to get the barn reconstructed?
We're working on it. We've brought in twenty-six thousand dollars, now thirty-one thousand, thanks to you, so we're getting close.
Okay, so if there are people out there that have not contributed yet, you still need additional funds?
We still need more funds.
Okay, thank you for being here today. Okay Ted?
All right, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council consider recommendations from the SAF Council Subcommittee for awarding of Special Assistance Fund, SAF, awards and discretionary funds, related contracts and purchase orders.
Second.
When you consider, you mean approve.
Exactly.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote. And the motion carries five zero, and again, congratulations to the Subcommittee and Gloria, you did a great job on this program as you do every year. Okay, we'll now move on to item number twelve, the last item on today's action calendar, which is an update on the city council chamber lighting project. And Randy, are you gonna take care of this?
Bruce?
Yeah.
Bruce, okay.
Thank you. Since the last council meeting on October third, staff met with Jay Jenkins from Palm Springs Video and Bill Bradley with Bradley Electric to develop a scope of work to address the council chamber lighting issues that were discussed at the October third council meeting. The LED fixtures were selected at that meeting. We reviewed the council chamber locations that were to best install the lights, and it was discussed that one light would be purchased and a test would be performed. That light was tested prior to today's council meeting, and also, all five council members were in presence in the council chamber during that test, to provide their input to staff. The test resulted in discussions to install a total of, I believe, eight lights with two spare lights, and to put four on each of the second clouds, which are positioned second back from the front here.
Three.
Three lights on each side?
Three, and reserve one on each side.
Okay, so a total of six, plus two reserves. Got it, okay. Should the council give us that direction and move forward today? We'll have Bradley Electric finalize- We'll have Bradley Electric finalize their scope of services, and we'll work with the city attorney on developing a contract. I did check with the lighting manufacturer last week. The lights are in stock, so they should be able to procure those lights. The vendor supplier also told me that they would give us an additional 10% discount on the lights if we purchased them all at one time. We hope that we can get the project completed hopefully by the end of November, so hopefully for your first December council meeting, we'll have this new lighting in place. So staff is looking for further direction. If you want to give us that direction we discussed earlier, then you can formally give that to staff today. Thank you.
Bruce, do you have an estimate of cost?
Jay told me he's still looking at around $10,000 to do the work.
That would include the six lights plus two additional?
Right, and he would do all the wiring in case we needed to add additional lighting. It would already be in place.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Scott, did you have a question?
I just had a comment, just because I oppose this, but I, so I want to just be on record one last time. I see the writing on the wall, but I feel like I need to just be on record. And I just feel that we don't need it. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. I think our lighting, current lighting, is adequate, and I think that this is just a waste of taxpayer dollars. But I wanted to just enter into the record, as I've expressed my personal opinion, but I did receive an email from a man named Roger Robles, who is a constituent and a resident of Rancho Mirage. I don't personally know Roger, and I did not solicit this email, but he did send this in. And I just think he makes a few good points that we should maybe consider one last time, especially given the demonstration that we had today. So I'll just read a couple of excerpts from his email that he sent October 11th, which I've provided to the council and staff and have asked the city clerk to enter into the record. Roger Robles is a lifelong professional photographer, has a lot of background and experience in this. He says the following: "The original lighting in the remodeled chambers was really terrible, and I was happy to see the newly improved placement of the key lights. And I'm surprised to see this subject still being argued. Attempting to light individuals across the broad days is difficult. Jay Jenkins was correct. The only way to achieve consistent illumination for all city council members would be to move the key lights further back and lower in the room and increase the intensity. But there's one big problem with this. You will have a field of sparkling, cold, hard LED daylight blinding you for two hours each meeting. This light source will be extremely annoying and fatiguing. It will completely change the ambiance and personality of the room. Note also that this will have a lower color temperature of 5,000 kilowatts. It is close to daylight, cool and not complementary to the human face unless you're a 19-year-old supermodel. The current existing incandescent lighting of 3,200 kilowatts is somewhat golden and warm in color and very flattering for the human flesh. It hides many sins. It's really a trade-off. I could light you in the most appealing way, and you'd all look like movie stars, but the continuous discomfort would be too distracting for you to conduct city business. The present key lighting is positioned only slightly high, but it is providing you comfort in viewing the audience. If the lights are placed at a lower angle further back in the room, as Mr. Jenkins suggests, the glare would prevent you from recognizing anyone in the audience, and you will all have headaches every other Thursday. Also note, mature audience members who wish to exit the chambers when the lights are on will be blinded by the glare, and this could present a safety issue. Remember, as you walk from the front of the room to the rear, you will be hit face-on by the LEDs. As the meeting progressed, I was studying the lighting conditions for each individual. I did not see anything that was particularly bad. The lighting varied slightly from person to person, but beyond some tweaking, you really are very close to where you want to be, given the limitations. To simplify the dilemma, as you move the key lights towards the back of the room, the light source is lowered and is more complementary to your face, but the lights then start to catch in your eyes and create all of the problems I mentioned. So there's a sweet spot where you will still look good but are not blinded by the light, and I think the current position may be correct for 90% of the days. Mr. Jenkins's $10,000 proposal for a bank of LEDs wired into the room is outrageous nonsense. You're being sold a product that is such overkill for your application. This is not Phantom of the Opera. It's a city council meeting. Everything you need for fine-tuning that room already exists on the premises. It just requires moving some lights around. It appears that you have double key lights on a few subjects. Bad. You just need to simplify the placement and clean things up." And he has a few parting remarks. So that's just a perspective from somebody who's also professional in the industry and what I've been trying to communicate. And after the demonstration today, boy, it is really a hard, significant, blinding light. If you look into it, you see spots. So I just want us to be thoughtful as we move forward with this, but I think that what we have now is completely adequate for a municipal city, and I oppose moving forward with this proposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Dana? When we arrived here for our meeting this afternoon, just before 1:00, a copy of the email that Mr. Hines has just read was sitting on our tabletops. It's unfortunate that the email wasn't given to or discussed with Ray Jenkins when he was here 30 minutes earlier, giving us a demonstration of what the LED lights would show and what they shouldn't or what they wouldn't show and how they would have to be placed. It would have been helpful if Mr. Hines had brought to his attention anything from this fellow Roger Robles' email that he felt was significant, but he didn't. I accept what Scott says, that he didn't contact Mr. Robles, but in his first line of the letter, Mr. Robles says, "Hey, Scott, thank you for connecting with me on LinkedIn, and I appreciate your support for my photography and artwork." So I'm sure he's wrong about you having contacted him, but that's what he says. What I'd like to do is I'd like to put this now into a little bit of perspective. At our last meeting, October 3rd, Mr. Hines said again at that time that he didn't think there was an issue for the council to concern itself with. If that premise were correct, I don't think the other four members of the council would have agreed to move forward with him voting no, saying we don't have an issue. We would have gone along with that. However, on the meeting before October 3rd, on September 16th, I think it was, our staff identified the scope of the issues that we faced and which we have been trying to address. Nobody on the council created these issues. Some people on the council, some members of staff, commented about some of the deficiencies of the system, but it was the staff that set forth the details of what should be corrected. The staff specifically addressed the issue of why, and I have the staff report here, as to why we were dealing with this lighting issue. They said, quote, "With the transition to in-house support of the council meetings, additional scrutiny has been placed on the quality of the production. After a review and discussion, a concern has been expressed regarding the quality and consistency of lighting in the council chamber." Staff went on to identify precisely what those problems were, and in the words of the staff report, these were the problems. One, both edges of the dais are dark and shadowy, making it difficult to view staff's oral presentations. Two, the current lighting exacerbates this problem as it dulls the image on the projector screens, causing the image to appear even darker. Three, the current system was installed in 2000, when the chamber was remodeled. Quote, "The system was not designed with consideration to screen projection, broadcast television, or presentations in front of the dais." Number four, staff said, "Unfortunately, the lighting system is not effective for modern Rancho Mirage council meetings." And five, they said, quote, "Some of the challenges with the 13-year-old lighting system include dark edges at both ends, making staff's presentations difficult to be seen, washing out the projection screens, not adequately lighting the presentation area in front of the dais, creating shadows on the council members' faces, and dark sections of the To solve that problem, our staff presented to us in this September 16th report, three alternatives. One was from a local company in the amount of $28,500, which also required the city to do much of the physical work. One was a proposal from an out-of-state company in excess of $87,000. And by the way, I don't understand why we would ever get a quote for a project that was labor-intensive, out-of-state. Maybe we should reconsider that sort of thing when we do get proposals, because anybody who has to work from out-of-state is obviously going to charge a lot more. So $87,000 being considerably higher than the $28,000 of the other one, although we still had work to do under the other proposal. Then the staff recommended a third company, which listed its price to be determined without telling us any guidelines. Staff recommended at that time that we spend $4,750 for a design fee from this other third firm. Mr. Jenkins, and the whole contract is about no more than double that design fee, staff recommended that the firm propose a comprehensive solution at all of these firms, a comprehensive solution to, as opposed to a Band-Aid approach. Couple of points. One, after sitting here, we all saw what the lights were like, and we will have to make some judgment as to whether they're too bright or not. I frankly thought that they may be too bright, and in which case, we won't go forward with them. But we'll never know until we find out. They may be just fine. They do certainly solve the lighting problems, but whether they're too bright in our eyes is the issue to be determined. And one final thing, while that issue remains open until we see them in set situation, Mr. Jenkins has been our videographer for the past dozen years or so. He was offering to do this, guide this project, at no cost to him. The only cost would be for the light bulbs and for the electrical work performed by an electrician with whom he has no financial arrangement. He was doing that voluntarily, and I really felt like we should be apologizing to Mr. Jenkins for having a member of the council say twice that we were getting bad advice and denigrating him in a manner that is not consistent with how we should be treating anybody, much less those who are volunteering their services for the city of Rancho Mirage. We may refuse the services. We may disagree that they're necessary, but I don't think that we should be denigrating people, and particularly a Rancho Mirage resident who was making this volunteer offer to the city.
Thank you, Dana. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item?
Yeah, I would.
Yes, Ted?
I agree with a lot of Dana's comments. What I found fine disturbing is the very same thing that occurred several weeks ago, when we had somebody come to the podium who was prepared to make a presentation, and it was frankly thrust upon us at the last moment, obviously, pre-planned to some degree. And when I look at this letter and I see the date on it, October 11th, today being October 17th, it appears to me that there was more than adequate time to have distributed this to the council so that they could have digested the contents and then be in a position to discuss this intelligently, as opposed to viewing it not just constructively, but to some degree acrimoniously. And so I do find fault with that. I don't like this. I expressed before my feelings that I don't like it in the business world and I don't like it in the public service world. And it would be the type of thing that I would hope to avoid in order for us to make good, sound, solid judgments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Move, re-receive, and file the report.
First a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion carries 5-0. And before we recess to close session, I'll have our city attorney, Steve Cantonea, discuss those items, which will be discussed in closed session. Steve?
Thanks. Now I can see myself in the new lighting.
Oh, wow.
What was that? Turn it down. The city council at this point is going to recess into closed session to confer with their real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 regarding property located at 42520 Bob Hope Drive in Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.8 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association. MoU.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, we will now recess.